On our first and only meeting in December, December 1st, 2011, please join me in standing as James Goode leads the board's opening prayer.
Okay, James. Our Father, we are truly thankful for this wonderful day you blessed us with, and especially this opportunity this evening to come here to be involved in activities and affairs of our school district. Father, we're so thankful we have this opportunity to say thank you to some very special teachers for their accomplishments in our school district and that we can publicly recognize them. But Father, we're also mindful this holiday season for the opportunity for both students and staff to have a reprieve from the activities of the classroom. We ask that you will bless all of them with safety and enjoyment during this holiday time. Father, help us as we attend to the business activities of this school district. May we always approach all of the many affairs of our school district in a very open and receptive attitude that we can appreciate and understand, but we can be courteous and respectful to everyone as we discuss all of these programs and activities. Father, we ask always for your continued blessings, and especially that you'll continue to bless us with good health and safety. And for this is our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Good thing I had that memorized.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session. As stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551 commonly knows the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all of our board is here tonight. We conduct a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I will turn over the meeting to Dr. Burns for agenda item 1A, welcome and recognition of guests.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. What a great crowd. Standing room only. It looks like the Ranger game during the World Series here or something. Thank you for being here tonight. If you would, help me in recognizing and appreciating our wonderful tuba players that were out front playing for you tonight. We'd like to extend our thanks to Keith Marshall, who's the assistant band director at Polk Middle School, and the CFB ISD Tuba Holiday Ensemble for providing the wonderful music tonight. They will also be performing "Tuba Holiday" with 150 tubas, if you have never seen that, that's quite an event, and baritone players on December 10th at Newman Smith High School. And we certainly appreciate the time that they took tonight to be with us and play for us. Our first recognition tonight begins with our VIP program. And so, I'd like to read you our information about the VIP program so you can appreciate our honorees. We honor our newest members in the very important profession of teaching tonight. We have been honoring our VIPs for over 25 years in this district. Our VIP program is our way of saying thank you to our professional staff for being innovative leaders in learning who diligently work to meet the needs of all our students. We want to recognize their efforts in making our schools a great place for quality learning to occur. To our honored guests, the Board of Trustees and the administration say thank you for being a member of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD team and for being an innovator who has a positive influence on the lives of students. Educators, please come forward when your principal introduces you tonight to receive your certificate. If there are staff members, friends, and family here tonight to celebrate this recognition, would you please stand as your VIP is introduced? And now at this time, Ms. Klein, would you join me to recognize our honored guests?
Good evening, President Klein, Dr. Burns, distinguished board members. My name is Les Black. I'm principal at Charles M. Blalack Middle School, and it's my honor tonight to introduce Mr. Tony Lipscomb as Blalack's newest honorary in the very important profession of teaching. This is Mr. Lipscomb's fourth year teaching math at Blalack, and he came to us after a successful career in the private sector. In the time he's been at Blalack, he's worked tirelessly to ensure the success not only of his students but of all Blalack students. He is a leader by example to students and colleagues alike. Mr. Lipscomb's students will tell you that he will go to any length to help them succeed, and parents of his students and his classes frequently tell me that Mr. Lipscomb's influence has had a profound impact on their child's success in math as well as their general attitude at school. Mr. Lipscomb is relentlessly positive and always available, every morning and every afternoon, one of the first to come and the last to leave, to work with any student who may need his help. Students understand this as a statement of belief in and commitment to their success. In his second year at Blalack, I asked Mr. Lipscomb to assist in coordinating a targeted tutorial program for our Title I students. It was our first year qualifying for targeted Title I money, and there was absolutely no blueprint for what I was asking him to do. As a first-year Title I principal, I was not unfortunately much help to him either. He was a second-year teacher asked with creating a vital school-wide program with limited direction. He built the program from the ground up, and over the next couple of years, he created a program that helped us identify and serve our most academically at-risk students. As an eighth-grade teacher, Mr. Lipscomb has also been instrumental in our Saturday tutorials, our SSI process, and as a district summer school teacher as well. He has helped a significant number of youngsters who've struggled with the first and second administration of tax in eighth grade through sheer persistence and hard work to achieve their goals. Something else interesting about Mr. Lipscomb is that he's devoted over 15 years to scouting, including a number of years as a scout master in one of our neighboring cities. He credits his experience in scouting as a major factor in helping him finally realize his middle school calling. He has two sons, the oldest of which is serving in the United States Navy. Currently, he's deployed in the Persian Gulf. Both of his boys, by the way, are Eagle Scouts. Every morning, there is music wafting out of Mr. Lipscomb's room, and the students are drawn into the room to see what he's playing, what's on Mr. Lipscomb's playlist this morning. I always make a point to make sure I walk by his room on Friday mornings because that's when there's always Beatles music coming out of his room. And Mr. Lipscomb, in fact, embodies the words of John Lennon, who told us, "There are no problems, only solutions." We at Blalack are thankful that Mr. Lipscomb chose to become part of our community and practice the very important profession of teaching as a Blalack Bear. Our hope is that he remains a Bear for a very long time. Tony Lipscomb.
My name is Lisa Williams, principal at Davis Elementary School. We're here tonight to honor our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Marissa teaches second grade bilingual. She is a devoted and a strong instructional leader at our school. Knowing that, I want you to hear in Marissa's words what she considers the underpinnings for her success. And as you hear her thoughts and feelings, you'll understand her heart as an educator, and you'll know how blessed we are to have her in CFB as part of our team. I was educated at Good, Perry, and R.L. Turner. This is home. My teachers created the love and respect that I have for this school district. I know what the district did for me, and now I can provide the same for my students. Dr. Mayer was my principal. Mrs. Barry Rose, an awesome teacher, substituted in my class, and I still remember the Hanukkah lesson she taught us. Mrs. Rose is still in this district and substitutes for me. This is a great place, CFB. Now, as a teacher, seeing all of the faces of those people I knew as a student and being able to share with them professionally is a true honor. Dr. Burns has a calming effect, and you take comfort in knowing that there are people in place who know what they're doing, looking down the road and leading us where we need to go. My first year teaching at Davis, the budget crisis was discussed, and I remember all of that. Dr. Burns was looking three or four years ahead and making small changes that protect us now. It makes me so thankful. There is a lot of pride for the community and schools. You feel appreciated in CFB. Marissa's parents are strong supporters of education, and they ensured opportunities for college for each of their four children. Following in those footsteps, Marissa provides learning experiences for her nieces and nephews and her son Rocky, visiting museums, hiking, discovering connections within nature, scavenger hunts at the library and science place so the children can see that there is a bigger world. She teaches her students and her young family members not only to dream big but also how to acquire the skill set to manifest those dreams. She says, "I want all of my students to have a fair opportunity, and I believe that having similar struggles and a similar background to my students helps me strengthen relationships." Marissa creates conditions daily so that the children look forward to being in class. And they love learning because Marissa loves learning. At Davis, we're working on academic discourse and teaching questioning ideas birthed themselves. For example, one seven-year-old thought and thought and thought and said, "Can I just ask one more question? What happens if we're left with no leader? What does that mean for us in second grade as citizens? And what if I go back to my mom's country? Does that mean I can't be president?" Then a moment of reality hit, and he said, "Well, I'm not really sure that I want to be president because of all the forms you have to fill out." Marissa responded, "Yes, that is one of the many sacrifices I know you about." Thoughtfully, Marissa's closest teammate stated she is a great teacher who is all about her students and a friend with whom I will forever treasure the opportunities that we have shared teaching. Davis Elementary and CFB are truly fortunate to have Marissa Eskamia as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
President of the board, Nancy Klein, members of the board, and Dr. Burns, good evening. I'm Janet Restebo. I'm the principal of the Kelly Pre-K Center. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing Elizabeth Cantu, our bilingual teacher, as a very important professional. Elizabeth Cantu is a can-do kind of teacher. She is a bilingual teacher, and she has taught in our district for seven years. She recently completed her master's degree in educational administration with a specialization and special ed diagnostician certification. She has got her degree at the Texas Women's University and looks forward to possibly advancing in her career right here in our school district. She has taught in second grade, first grade, and now enjoys teaching pre-kindergarten. What kind of a teacher is Elizabeth Cantu, and why would I think, or the teachers of our school think, she's a very important professional? Well, several of the teachers describe Elizabeth as a teacher who has many, many good ideas and is willing to share all of her ideas with the other teachers and help them get along in their classroom. The whole staff knows that Elizabeth is one of the first teachers to arrive in the morning. She's always prepared for her day and for her week. She loves her students, and her students love her, mostly because she makes learning fun. And she insists on doing things in her classroom that ensure their success. She makes connections to life for them. Elizabeth is a lot of fun to have around the building. She always wants to have a party or prepare for lunch, which teachers love to do. She's very comfortable with technology. She's great with the active board and makes use of lots of technology resources with her children. Elizabeth thinks outside the box. She makes other teachers and other students wonder about what's happening in the world around her. She's very pensive. I know that when I present a new practice to my staff that the district is encouraging us to do in the classrooms for the year, that Elizabeth will have many questions about the new practice that I would like her to start using in her classroom. She's not one of those teachers that just nods her head and quickly gets busy doing what I ask her to do. Oftentimes, I will have very late afternoon meetings with Elizabeth and other staff members in my office, just to go through the details of what this new change is going to look like, how it's going to come about, and how it's going to feel for her and the children in her classroom. She never makes me feel like she's saying, "Why do I need to make change? Just make me understand it better so that I can really do what you want me to do." She has many good teaching practices, and she likes to see things from two sides. Even though she's as good as she is in the classroom with her bilingual students, and she started with a class of about 27 in the morning for several weeks this year, remember, think of four four-year-olds in your house at Christmas time. Eight, 10, 12, 27 four-year-olds in your room for three hours. It's a busy, busy day and a big challenge. Well, she knows that she needs to do the best things to make their day be a successful day. She accepts the challenge, and she knows that they have to be successful. Sometimes people will say to her, "The students in her classroom have less of an experiential background, and they may struggle with success in school." And Elizabeth refuses to accept this. Elizabeth insists, "If life gives you less, you do more to make a better life for yourself." She knows how to communicate with her parents. She talks to them in a way that they understand, and they want to support their children and improve their education. Elizabeth does more than she needs to do in the classroom. At every PTA activity, Elizabeth is there. She's staying late. Leo is there with her, whether he wants to or not, to support her. She's been the district improvement council representative for the building for as long as they would let her go to the meetings, and now she's been promoted. But we used her extra minutes and took charge of letting her lead us through our LPACs. There are many, many LPACs in a building with 300 pre-K students and many special ed students. She's done an excellent job. With the help of the people in the bilingual department, they've led her through every detail, and she's meticulous and enjoys inviting them back to check her and make sure that everything's perfect. She crosses every T and dots every I, and I am so proud and happy to have Elizabeth Cantu as a part of our staff at the Kelly Pre-K Center, and I know she's a very important professional. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good evening, Mrs. Klein, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. My name is Brooke Perselli, and I serve as the principal at DeWitt Perry Middle School. It is my honor to introduce Perry's newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Jessie Freshman.
Mrs. Freshman has been teaching in CFB for the past six years and is truly a homegrown product of the district. She began in first grade at Woodlake Elementary, then attended Dan F. Long Middle School, and graduated from Newman Smith in 1993. After graduating from UNT, she felt drawn to teaching, probably due in part to the fact that her twin sister is a teacher, and her mother, Mary Lynch, has been teaching in CFB since 1982. Mrs. Freshman began her career as a special education classroom aide at DeWitt Perry in 2005. She then became a special education teacher in the spring of 2007 and the CM teacher in 2010. This year, she has also assumed the role of chair of the special education department. This is in addition to co-sponsoring the cheerleaders, co-coordinating our academic UIL team, and mentoring a first-year teacher. She is always the first to volunteer for a school dance, a fundraiser, or any time when dedicated teachers are needed. A colleague says, "You can rely on Jessie for anything and everything. If you can't find a way to get it done, she will." Mrs. Freshman says she teaches because she knows that every day is new and different. She says special education is challenging, and no two days are ever the same. Under her leadership as the content mastery teacher and special education student case manager, the tax scores for our special education students have increased in almost all areas, including a 16% gain in reading and a 10% gain in math. Another colleague says, "She is always striving to create the most positive environment within our department for both students and teachers." When asked, Mrs. Freshman's students say, "She's cool," which we know is high praise for middle school kids. Another says, "She's helpful and kind. She'll always help me if I have a problem." DeWitt Perry and CFB are truly fortunate to count Mrs. Jessie Freshman as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, members of the board. My name is DeeDee Lacy, and I am the principal of McLaughlin-Strickland, and we are pleased tonight to present to you our VIP, Katie Thomas. Katie comes from a loving family of educators. She has a wonderful, supportive husband, Dave, and a two-year-old son named Parker. I've known Katie for several years. We actually worked together in Richardson before we discovered that on the same summer, we decided to move to CFB to the same school. So we made great choices together, and I was ecstatic to have Katie at our school. We'd like to honor Katie through the words of her students that they shared with me through their writing. So we'll start with Chris, who wrote, "I know why you are VIP, Ms. Thomas. It's because you organize all of the fun events like track meet and turkey trot and field day." Then Anice noted, "You are more than a PE teacher. You are a good friend to us." And Arjun added, "You are like the tires on my bike. Without you, I cannot ride through life. You are a great motivator." Brenda shared that Coach Thomas is our PE teacher because she has a big and beautiful heart. And Giuliano wrote, "You are very talented, and you put a lot of time and effort into everything you do for us. You inspire me a lot." Many students shared that they have learned the importance of eating healthy, staying hydrated, exercising, and learning from Coach T. The staff agrees that Katie always goes above and beyond incorporating classroom objectives into PE and Team Tiger so that students have other ways of learning the content. Katie does whatever it takes, such as planning school science nights, running marathons with kids, setting cup-stacking world records with our students, working with small groups, mentoring students, playing volleyball on the school team, and even traffic duty. With all this, she still finds time to scrapbook fun times that she shares with friends and family. Katie is a real all-star on our team and is a great addition to the very important profession of teaching.
What a great group. And they really appreciate your support. So all of you that had to come and stand, thank you for being here and supporting the VIPs in such a great way. Next, we'd like to have David Hicks, principal at Ranchview High School, come forward, and he's going to introduce our business partner, MacArthur Boulevard Baptist Church, and Pastor Josh Smith and associate pastor Darren Meckling. Mr. Hicks?
Okay. Pastors, please come forward. Good evening. My name is David Hicks. I'm the principal at Ranchview High School, and on behalf of Ranchview High School and the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, it is my honor to recognize MacArthur Boulevard Baptist Church for their involvement in our partnership and education program. We are blessed to have such a wonderful relationship with MacArthur Boulevard. Their constant outreach is an example of what is possible when a public school and a community of caring individuals work together to be partners in the education and welfare of our students. I first met the pastors of MBBC in 2006 when they welcomed me to the community as the new principal at Ranchview. Pastor Josh Smith immediately came by the school to offer his support and to dialogue about how they could support our efforts in the school district. Since that first meeting, Pastor Smith and his team have allowed our fine arts groups to use the sanctuary for performances and formal auditions. They've opened their doors for our annual PSAT workshop. They've hosted our senior class baccalaureate services. They've presented our teachers with welcome-back gifts, annual appreciation luncheons, and most importantly, they've offered heartfelt prayer for the benefit of our teachers and students. Additionally, MBBC members have mentored our students, and they continue to do so through our Communities and Schools program. And under the guidance of Associate Pastor Meckling, more than 65 members of the church adopted our varsity football team this year. In an unprecedented display of community involvement and wearing specially-designed T-shirts that sported the numbers of their selected players, church members cooked team meals, cheered wildly, celebrated after our wins, and encouraged after our losses, and they filled the stands at both home and away football games. Making such a visible and personal investment in the lives of our youngsters with whom they had no prior relationship is a gift whose future impact is beyond measure and whose value is simply priceless. On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, with Nancy Klein president and Dr. Bobby Burns superintendent presenting, it is our privilege to present this plaque to MacArthur Boulevard Baptist Church. Your church family truly exemplifies a meaningful partnership between our community and our schools. Accepting the plaque are MacArthur Baptist Associate Pastor Darren Meckling and Lead Pastor Josh Smith. Thank you.
We have a very special treat for you, Meg. So I'm going to introduce Pastor Michael Hollen from R.L. Turner High School, theater teacher, and he's going to introduce the ensemble group from the R.L. Turner musical. Hollen?
Dr. Burns, school board, and members of the community. She's back. America's most beloved musical, Annie, will hit the R.L. Turner Auditorium, giving a whole new generation the chance to experience this classic musical about never giving up hope. The timeless tale of little orphan Annie will be coming to the R.L. Turner Auditorium for three performances on January 12th through the 14th at 7:30 PM. The original Broadway production of Annie won seven Tony Awards, including Best Musical, Book, and Score. It ran 2,377 performances and has subsequently been produced all over the world. The original production is one of the top 20 longest-running shows in Broadway history, and Annie continues to be one of the most successful musicals ever. In addition, R.L. Turner High School has been given the distinct pleasure of being the last organization to produce this show before its Broadway revival this summer. Boasting one of Broadway's most memorable scores, including "It's a Hard Knock Life", "Easy Street," "NYC," and the ever-optimistic "Tomorrow," you can bet your bottom dollar that Annie will bring a smile to your face. It is with great pleasure that I can introduce to you a small portion of our 75-member cast as they perform "It's a Hard Knock Life." as they perform "It's a Hard Knock Life."
I'm so sorry. Can we start that again? I'm sorry. They were supposed to be in place. Can we start that one more time? I'm so sorry. The entrance took a little longer. But remember, let's give them a big round of applause because it's Annie.
I could have a school board meeting with that. Good job, ladies. 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 You gonna make it?
Wow. I'm not sure we can continue the meeting after that because that was pretty outstanding. We certainly encourage you to make plans for Annie. It's going to be a great show, and we want to thank Mr. Holloman and all the parents and the students from Turner to bring that to us tonight for a preview. So that concludes our recognition and announcements. We do have a few more announcements we'd like to share with you, though, up on the screen about some upcoming events in the district.
Good evening, and welcome to another edition of the Board Announcements for the month of December. Time flies when you're having fun, and we are certainly having fun being students in the Academy for Media Arts and Technology at R L Turner High School in Carrollton. We are pleased to deliver the important news you need to know about the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District and all the fine schools that represent it.
Dr. Burns and his leadership team were busy once again the last couple of months honoring another set of schools who earned either an exemplary or a recognized rating for the 2010-2011 school year. An incredible 31 schools earned either one of these outstanding ratings last year. The schools visited recently were Lovelita Elementary, exemplary; Davis Elementary, exemplary; Rosemead Elementary, exemplary; Rainwater Elementary, recognized; and Sheffield Primary, recognized.
Congratulations to all of those outstanding schools. And speaking of exemplary performances, the Newman Smith High School Marching Band placed 14th at the State Marching Band Competition in San Antonio. Congratulations on your awesome performance at the state competition and to having another great year of marching success. And another fine arts group doing great things is the Creekview High School Orchestra. Creekview's High School Wind Symphony will perform at the 65th Annual Midwest Clinic, which is an international band and orchestra conference held at McCormick Place West, Chicago, Illinois, in December.
Since 1946, Chicago has hosted one of the most important annual gatherings in the music education field. The Midwest Clinic and International Band and Orchestra Conference draws music educators, professionals, and students from all 50 states and more than 30 nations. Traditionally, beginning on the third Tuesday of December and concluding the following Saturday, this event has become the annual year-end tradition of thousands of music educators around the world.
The Creekview High School Wind Symphony was selected from a pool of more than 150 applicants to perform at the conference this year. Congratulations to Creekview and their outstanding fine arts program.
District academies, such as the Academy for Media Arts and Technology, which we are a part of, the I V program at Ranchview, and early college high school are in the midst of recruiting eighth graders for next year at all the district middle schools. Visit the district website, www.cfbisd.edu/academies, and event dates calendar, www.cfbisd.edu/events, for more information.
Another schedule that is very important is the C F B I S D holiday calendar for December and January. Here are some dates that you should write down. December 15th and 16th are early release days and exam days for middle and high school students. December 19th through December 30th are district holidays, and January 2nd is a teacher preparation day and a student holiday. The second semester for C F B I S D begins on January 3rd.
That's it for December's Board Announcements. Don't forget that the next regular school board meeting is on Thursday, January 12th at 7:00 P. M. in the boardroom of the Administration Building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. Thank you for watching. We will see you next month. Good night.
Ms. Klein, that concludes our announcements tonight.
Well, this has been an outstanding opportunity to recognize our V I Ps, and we really appreciate the teachers and staff that we recognize tonight for dedicating your professional careers to working in C F B. Such diverse things y'all do, but such similar accomplishments. Thank you also, MacArthur Boulevard Baptist Church, for reaching out and connecting with Ranchview High School, and we always welcome opportunities to partner. You know, sharing your facilities is one thing, but, you know, working so closely with our students, we really appreciate that from the pastors and your congregation. And then, how exciting to get to see the poor, rough orphans from Annie. And we hope that you'll attend their program, and does anyone know when that is?
January 12th.
January 12th and 13th.
And save them from Mrs. Hannigan. She sounds like a real doozy. So we're going to take about a 10-minute break, but before we do that, I'm going to announce that our next agenda item, which is the report from Superintendent, there are some people we understand may want to speak on that item underneath Audience for Guests opportunity. So I'd like to remind everybody that we do encourage comments from citizens of the district or from district employees under Audience for Guests. If you would like to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group, you may do so by providing the forms that are outside our double doors to Ms. Sharon Scrivner, who is here at the corner of our table. And please, if you'd like to speak sooner than later, make sure she gets it A S A P. Just remember that if it's not a posted item, the board cannot discuss it or act on it, but we do understand some people do want to speak under Item 2 A. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. It's, let me see my computer, it's 7:40, and we'll come back at 7:50. Thank y'all for joining us and celebrating our V I Ps with us. Two with Agenda Item 2, report by Superintendent, A, Presentation on Student Achievement, bilingual, dual-language ESL programs. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein, members of the board. As our tradition, we present and bring to the board information regarding student achievement in the district, both what we have been doing, what we're planning on doing, et cetera. And then, as an annual report, we talk about bilingual ESL programs in the school district. A bilingual also encompasses the dual-language programs that we have. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mayer to introduce our presentation tonight. So, Dr. Mayer?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Yes, once a year, my throat does this, and people say things like, "How low can her voice really go?" It's a contest. As you probably already know, once a year, each district presents an update on its bilingual ESL program. That is a compliance issue. We have a very strong bilingual ESL team in our district. Each district gets to select, it is required by law to have bilingual education, but each district gets to select how they have bilingual education. And in this district, as you know, we have one-way and two-way dual language. I'd like to introduce the team and talk to you about the team that really serves as the structure, framework, and support of this work. Carolina Perez is one of our L PAC clerks. Estella Ohm is our database clerk. Deborah Cisco, Deborah, if you please stand, is our Secretary for Bilingual ESL. Monica Coto, remain standing, please, is our translator. Kat Julian is an E L A ESL instructional specialist. Teresa Doncoso is our bilingual ESL E L A specialist. Martina Flores is our ESL E L A bilingual specialist. Sylvia Tereshek is our E L A specialist. And Olivia Perez is our ESL coordinator. And the person that heads this team is our Director of Bilingual ESL, Dr. Isabella Pina Inosa, and I am going to turn it over to her at this time, and I'm sure you're all relieved of that, that I'm not going to talk any longer.
Good evening. Dr. Burns, Madam President, and the School Board members. All districts required to conduct a bilingual education or an ESL second, ESL, excuse me, English as a Second Language program shall conduct the periodic assessment and continuous diagnosis in the languages of instruction to determine the program impact and the student outcomes in all subject areas, and this is why we are here today. The Commissioner's rules on dual language is the development of fluency and literacy in English and another language for all students, paying special attention to the limited English proficient students participating in the program. A minimum of 50% of the instructional time must be provided in the language other than In the world of language acquisition theory, there is discourse and dialogue among different areas of scholarship and inquiry. These theories are shared on the language of acquisition. Linguistics speak of the nature of language and how to acquire another language. Psycholinguistics discuss how language and the mind work together to acquire language. Sociolinguistics discuss how language works in society. While psychology, sociology, and anthropology discuss the human interaction of language and culture. There is data by Thomas and Collier, who have extensively continued to do research over and over with the same results. They have data over 600 million records. And what they did is they looked at the program for the students in grades K through fifth, and then their outcome on a norm-reference test in high school 11th and 12th grade. For students with no services, by the end of their high school year, the students scored at the 24th percentile on a national norm. For students who received the ESL pullout, also scored on a 24th percentile N C E. For students who received content-based in their elementary years, their scores were at the 34th percentile. Students who received the early exit traditional ESL, they were at the 35th percentile. Students in the early exit with content-based ESL scored at the 40th percentile. Students in the one-way dual-language program scored at the 52nd percentile N C E, and this is above the norm of the bell curve, the 50th percentile. While students in the two-way dual-language outperformed all other students at the 61th It is because of this and the robust piece of research that we studied, C F B studied this deeply, and it prompted our district to look at our programs. The one-way dual-language program of C F B, these are Spanish speakers that receive instruction in two languages. The two-way, we have English and Spanish fluent speakers receive an instruction in two languages. Prior to 2009, C F B, we used the early exit program that was time-based. This means one week we taught the content in one language, and the following week it was in the second language. The one-way dual-language was restructured in the spring of 2009, kinder through fifth grade, on a subject-based model, meaning language arts and social studies are in Spanish, while math and science are in English. We're facing this model over time. We are now up to third grade. This is a student from Davis Elementary in the one-way dual-language program. Excuse me.
Yonell.
Yonell, what are you going to do next week?
I am, I'm going to celebrate Thanksgiving with my family.
And what are you going to eat?
I'm going to eat bread and chicken, and also I'm going to eat pumpkin pie.
Ooh, you like pumpkin pie? Good for you.
Yeah, apple pie too.
Y'ahora dígame en español. ¿Qué vas a hacer la semana que viene?
Yo voy a celebrar el día de las gracias. Nosotros vamos a comer pavo, pan, y también, y también, manzanas, manzanas con pie, y...
Qué bueno.
También, pumpkin pie with... También, pumpkin pie with...
In the two-way dual language program model, from 2006 to 2007, 2006, '07 to 2010, '11, the program model was time-based. One week, one language, the following week, another language, the second language, at Blanton, Stark, and Thompson. 2011, 2012, we are now subject-based, meaning language arts and social studies in Spanish, math and science in English, at Stark and Thompson. These are students who have been in the two-way program since kinder. These are fluent English speakers speaking in Spanish.
Yo voy a ir a la casa de mi, de mi abuela para comer pavo con mis primos, y creo que mi hermano va a venir.
Qué bueno. Gracias.
Yo voy a cambiar mucho pavo, y puede ir a la Great Wolf Lodge.
Yo voy a Colorado y voy a comer pavo con mi familia.
Oh. ¿Qué tiene otra vez?
Ocho.
Otra vez.
Otra cosa.
Como quieras, sí.
Okay. Okay, no, same thing, same thing, same thing. Yo, yo y mis primeros y mi familia voy a jugar un juego de fútbol americano y comer mucho, 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 mucho pavo.
Gracias. And then we also have the ESL program in our district. In elementary, all classroom teachers are ESL certified. In middle school, we have a newcomers course and ESL I, II, and III. They also receive REIT 180 and some addition, and additional English class as well. In high school, we have the newcomers course with ESL I and II for new immigrants or students four years or less in U.S. schools. Now, we have Olivia Perez, who will share with you the stellar program.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to share our work. The stellar program is the strategies for teachers of English language learners achieving results. This is to build the professional capacity of mainstream teachers of English language learners through professional development in order to impact the achievement of our ELLs. Our ELL strategies are taught using the ESL protocol, through model classrooms, using GLAD, guided language acquisition design strategies, and following the English language proficiency standards, ELS. Our stellar campuses, the teachers of science, social studies, mathematics, and language arts, and currently we have at Vivian Field Middle School, 37 teachers. DeWitt Perry Middle School, 37 teachers. RL Turner High School, 26 teachers, and we add four a year. Central Elementary has eight, adding four a year. Dan F. Long Middle School, their first year to participate, has five teachers. Creekview High School, first year to participate, has seven teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. The language proficiency assessment committee, the LPAC committee, every year, they meet at the beginning of the school year to identify students for the program. We meet again around February to decide their testing for the state testing. We do annual reviews at the end of the year for each ELL student. We monitor students and their progress every nine weeks. And these are the numbers of students in CFB for the past school year. During 2010, 2011, we had 6,509 ELLs. We exited 886 students, first-year monitors. We had from the prior year, second-year monitors, 969. We have identified and continue to look at former LEPS students who were in the bilingual program. We have 2,002 in the district, no longer ELL. We have former LEPS students in the district, 1,557, for a total of 11,922, and this represents 45.57% of students in our district who are current ELL, monitored students, or former We have 52 languages other than English in the bilingual ESL program. 83% of them, 83.8, are Spanish speakers. 3.1% are Vietnamese speakers in the bilingual ESL program. Koreans are 2.7%, and Telugu 2.2%. These are the top languages. There's 52. In the district, we have 91 languages other than English. 51.29 are English speakers, is what they wrote in their home language survey, while 39.44 identified themselves as knowing Spanish. Vietnamese, 1.75, and Korean, 1.51, and Telugu, .96. Again, these are the top languages of the district. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask where, what part of the country or what part of the world does Telugu come from?
Telugu is from India.
India? Okay, thank you.
And surrounding states from India.
Okay, thank you.
And this concludes our board presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Inosa. And Dr. Inosa and her staff be prepared for any questions that the board might ask, might have.
Mr. Shore?
Can I ask you to go to the slide that has the graph of the national data, the long-term academic achievement, please? My understanding of what you're sharing with us is that the students who are receiving instruction in two-way dual language are scoring the highest in reading.
Yes, sir. English reading.
Do we know, or is there any data on whether those students are performing at a higher level in other subjects?
I am not sure. No. What they looked at is the reading.
Where I'm going with this is, I'm pretty certain that there's a connection between exercise and academic performance. What I'm wondering is, is there an additional connection if we not only get our kids exercising more, but making them all learn a second language, whether we have enhanced their learning, and that's what I'm wondering about?
Their data did show that students had a higher level of learning for all the 6 million records that they have, 600, excuse me. And it's been replicated over and over with different languages, not just Spanish, but with other languages across the nation.
So I'm understanding that students who know two languages are scoring higher in the reading, in English reading?
We would assume that if they're scoring higher in English reading, then therefore they would score higher in other subject areas, since reading is the foundation of all other content. But we can, I can look into it.
If you could...
I will look into it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Shore, if I might try to...
We weren't going to hear from you anymore.
I know, I know. I just cannot remain silent on this particular slide issue. What the research clearly indicates, and, and, you know, I think everyone has something that speaks to them and motivates them, and for me, it happens to be research. I just, it is. But I know that all research is not created equal. But this research has been replicated, has been replicated with a very large N, like she says, millions of students. It's been replicated with the same results with different languages, and the findings are always the same. Students who receive instruction in two languages and learn two languages and become bilingual and biliterate, outscore monolingual speaking students again and again.
Does that score them in all subjects?
Outscore them in reading. That's what we have evidence of. But if they outscore them in reading, it serves, you could probably build a case that you could possibly outscore them in other areas. This is true not only across our nation, it's true, you know, in Canada, they do the same studies with French, and they see it again and again. And so there's more and more research about speaking two languages, the benefit on the brain, and what's actually going on with the brain research is supporting that.
Thank you.
Ms. Watt?
Isabella, could you share with us how successful the changes have been this year in the two-way dual with the literacy done, doing literacy all in Spanish and math and science all in English? Have the students and the staff adapted to it fairly well?
It was the staff that saw the successes of the one-way using the content base, and so they wanted to move towards that. The staff has been adapting very well. The students, we believe, and we see that they're acquiring a lot more language. Instead of having the Spanish every other week, they're having it every single day in language arts and social studies. So therefore, we're seeing that they are picking up a lot more Spanish. You saw the students in the two-way. Last year, even though they did speak the language, they have made great progress within only the first few weeks. The students are, I believe, are progressing very well. We're seeing a lot more Spanish. And they have books in the content areas for math and science to be used in language arts.
So are the teachers that are using English only in math and science, are they finding ways to use literacy in the English area of math and science?
The curriculum online shares, and the coordinators share, that they, there is curriculum there for them to have the opportunity to have books read in English and during math and science. We also encourage students to also read outside at home, books in English as well.
At this time, are there any more questions? We have a number of audience for guests that want to speak about an area of this subject. So are we okay with going, moving on to that, or anybody have any more questions? I believe we have approximately 10 speakers for audience for guests under this item. We have a couple more for later under regular audience for guests. But we'll, we do, as we said, encourage comments from citizens. We ask that the comments be no longer than three minutes. What this group has asked is if their minutes can kind of be co-mingled a little, because they had a hard time doing three minutes per speaker. So Mr. Goode, engineer that he is, has adopted a approach that he will explain. Mr. Goode?
I have one timer for 30 minutes total, and when it expires, you'll hear an old car horn.
Excuse me, let me just clarify, we do have 11 speakers. So if you could just give us 33 minutes, that will help us. And all 11 names have been submitted. But if all the speakers would come up, and we'll introduce and get started.
I will also provide sort of a ding every three minutes, just so you'll know if you want to use that. Otherwise, if you use all of your time, get through all of your speakers. I'm just out of courtesy, provide that sort of reference.
Okay. As long as the dings aren't too loud, that could be distracting.
And procedurally, we just request that you, each speaker, give their name and address.
All right. All right. Good evening, school board and district administrators. My name is Andrea Egan. I live at 2600 Latimer Lane in Farmers Branch, and I have a kindergartner in dual language at Janie Stark. My passion for dual language began four years ago at a parent, preschool parent night at Cindy Goodspeed's home, where then Principal Abby Mccone, every single dual language teacher at Janie Stark, students, and teachers, and parents all spoke about this amazing new dual language program. Their data and their passion was presented, and it was that night that I realized public school may be an option for my family. First of all, I really want to thank Carrollton Farmers Branch School District, because you are truly a pioneer in dual language in the region, in the state. We are at a crossroads tonight, and that is, we have a fifth-grade class that will be in, be moving on to middle school in the fall, and we need to make a decision tonight. Do we want to continue this program where we are differentiating graduates, we are differentiating our district, and we are able to attract families such as us to this program? I was going to define further dual language, I don't think I need to after that wonderful presentation. I do just want to stress that we are not an ESL program. Our children are learning half-day in Spanish, half-day in English. We are not doing this to help a minority language population. We are doing this because it is a win-win for everyone in this country, for everyone in the education system to be in a program like this. We will spend the next 30 minutes presenting why dual language is attracting families to Carrollton Farmers Branch School District, the astounding research data, and the concrete options we have to continue dual language through 12th grade.
Good evening. My name is Libby Ramirez, and I live at 6419 Malaga in Irving. My son Alex is a kindergartner in the dual program at Stark. My husband and I are big believers in the public school system. We are both products of the public school system ourselves, went on to graduate from a top-ranked university, and then to earn professional degrees. We know public education works, and we choose public education for our family. We have always prioritized the public school system when determining where to buy a home. As part of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, we have elected to enroll our son Alex at Stark rather than our home school of La Vida Elementary because of the dual offering at Stark. Yes, we drive past the shiny, new, and much more convenient school every single day because we believe in the potential of the dual program and hope it can assist with our efforts at home to raise fluently bilingual children. We were surprised and pleased to find a community of dedicated, involved parents at Stark who prioritize education as much as we do. And while we are excited about the K through 5 opportunities that the district has to offer, we find ourselves wondering what we will do when it's time to enroll in middle school. We've discussed pursuing charter school admission or moving to a city with an exemplary district. It would be even better if there was a reason to stay within Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. We sincerely hope that you will consider how much a program such as continuing the dual language offerings will bring families and retain families to this district, further benefit the children that you serve in this global society, and provide additional reasons for the district to shine. Thank you.
Good night. Distinguished members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me to speak before you on this subject. My name is Santiago Valiente, and my family and I live in the 12241 Ridge Fair Place in Farmers Branch. I'm a father of two children, one already attending the Janie Stark Elementary, and the other one who hopefully will start attending next school year. As recent migrants to the United States, the appeal to the dual language program is that it allows my daughter to ease her transition from the schooling system, she already had a taste in Mexico, to the schooling system in the United States, keeping in touch with the Hispanic roots and language, and at the same time, helping her to integrate into the American society. I've noticed how compelling is the program for her, as she's not shy about having to communicate with others in either language, as well as grasping concepts, talk to her, whereas these are communicating... whereas these are communicated in Spanish or in English. As for my son, I expect the dual language program to provide him with the same basis as with my daughter, even as is his case is to reinforce his grasp of the Spanish language. As due to the media to which he's exposing its majority, he has a tendency to handle himself in English instead of Spanish, which is somehow embarrassing. This also makes a case for the other families where the parents are Hispanic parents and who had not the opportunity to excel in their primary language due to their situation and how they arrived here to the United States. And they have also to carry the burden to educate their children and talk their primary language in the case in which they are not properly prepared even to speak Spanish. I've noticed this a lot. In sum, what the dual language program is providing and with your support in extending this program into middle school and probably into high school is to enrich the lives of the children passing through this program, giving them a wider exposure to other cultures, even if they have no Hispanic ascendance, therefore providing this society with better adjusted and integrated individuals. Please support and extend this program. We are presented with the tools to build a better society and this program is one of those tools. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Lamb. I live at 2957 May Dell Lane in Farmers Branch. I'm the proud parent of three Stark stallions, all of whom are in the dual language program. Several years ago, we were faced with a decision on where to send our oldest son to school. Both my husband and I are the products of public school and are very supportive of the public school system. Wanting the best education for our children, we had transferred out of Stark, our neighborhood school, to Country Place Elementary. About a week before our son started, I started hearing about the new program that was being rolled out at Stark called Dual Language. Needless to say, my son never stepped foot in the door at Country Place we were sold. Six years later, I now have a fifth, third and first grader in the program. I know that choosing to enroll my kids in dual language at Stark was absolutely the right decision for their education and their future. Dual language has meant so much to my family. It challenges my kids academically. They're excited to go to school and thrilled to come home to share the knowledge they have learned. As both my husband and I are non-Spanish speakers, the kids love to try to teach us Spanish. We know that this could be a problem down the road as they're all going to be able to talk to each other and we will not know what they're saying. Dual language exposes my kids to a broader world. It makes them more accepting of people that might not look exactly like them or speak just like they do. It's almost as if they're colorblind. They don't notice the difference in language or skin, they just see their friends. Spanish language brings them together. My daughter has a friend who entered the dual program this spring, knowing very little English after moving here from Monterey. When she comes to our house to play, they speak Spanish. I love that. They may not realize it now, but being bilingual will open so many doors for them in the future. What an asset will be for them. My kids have worked so hard to get to where they are, I would hate for them to lose what they've learned. Dual language has meant so much to our family, I could go on and on. So I come tonight asking that you'll please continue this fabulous program that has allowed my kids to grow and blossom in ways I never imagined possible. Please give them the opportunity to continue their bilingual education into middle school and beyond. Thank you.
Buenas noches. A todos miembros del comite, padres y compañeros. Soy Madison Hirsch y tengo diez años. Soy un estudiante de quinto grado en la escuela de Janey Stark. Voy a completar seis años en el programa de lenguaje dual. Algunos de mis amigos son Sabrina Sanchez, Jack Lamb, Diana Ramos, Jake Beno, Giovanni Rizzo y Montavia Miller. Todos nosotros podemos leer, escribir y hablar en español. Aprender español ha sido difícil, pero mis padres quieren que siga estudiando este idioma. Mis padres saben que entender dos idiomas es una ventaja muy grande, abrirá muchas puertas y posibilidades en mi vida. Ellos no quieren que pierda mi español cuando mi tiempo en Stark se termine. Con su ayuda podemos hacer mejor y más extenso. Ayúdame a ser un parte esencial y útil de este mundo multilingüe. Gracias.
Greetings, members of the board, parents and students. My name is Diana Ramos and what my friend Madison was saying was that she's a fifth grader at Janey Stark and is about to complete her sixth year in the dual language program. We can read, write and speak Spanish. She said learning Spanish has been difficult, but her parents want her to continue studying Spanish because knowing two languages would give her a huge advantage. It would open many, many doors and possibilities in her life. Her parents do not want her to lose her Spanish when she leaves Stark. With your help, we can make this program.
...between English language learners and native English speakers. Ms. Hinahosa, Dr. Hinahosa put up a great graph, I think that really tells that story better than we can, but we're going to drill into that graph a little bit. One thing to keep in mind again is that to close that gap, school districts around the country have traditionally used ESL programs, which involves some intensive supplemental English language education. The program that we have at Stark is not a traditional ESL program. It is a dual language, a two-way dual language program where you've got Spanish speakers learning to speak English, English speakers learning to speak Spanish. So the issue that Jennifer Bauer is going to come up and talk about is how well does dual language close that achievement gap as opposed to other traditional ESL models? The second part, the second type of research is going to, Julie Beno is going to come up and then discuss how dual language programming raises scores and achievement levels for all participants in dual language, including the English language learners. And Mr. Shore, I noticed that you asked during the presentation, what about math? What about these other subjects? Well, we've asked that same question and we've actually corresponded directly with Virginia Collier about this and she's got some brand-new research out of North Carolina that at least starts to shed light on that question. She's got data on both reading and math, so Julie's going to discuss that. And then I'm going to come back up here and talk about how dual language helps prepare our kids to compete for jobs in a global economy.
My name is Jennifer Bauer. My address is 3015 Lavita Lane, Farmers Branch. I have a child in kindergarten in the dual language program at Janey Stark. I believe you were emailing copies of the articles whose data I am referencing, Teaching English Language Learners and the Astounding Effectiveness of Dual Language Education for All. In 2008, 1 in 9 students were English language learners. Within 20 years, it's estimated that that number will rise to 1 in 4 students. The achievement gap between English language learners and non-English language learners is large. Fourth grade English language learners scored 36 points below non-English language learners in reading and 25 points below non-English language learners in math. The gap in eighth grade grows to 42 points below in reading and 37 points below in math. Wayne Thomas and Virginia Collier are the research professionals from Virginia Tech and University of California. They've done extensive research in the dual language programs in 23 different school districts and 15 different states representing all regions of the United States. Janey Stark is one of the schools they have researched. They've also been instrumental in advising our administration on designing and implementing the dual language programs. In fact, the current program that Janey Stark uses is based on a recent recommendation by them. The English reading scores of English learners in Houston ISD dual language classes are higher than the scores of English learners in ESL classes. Dual language English language learners scored at or above grade level for grades 1 through 5. English learners in other ESL classes scored below grade level in grades 2 through 5. In Maine, English learners in dual language classes typically reach grade level reading scores by fifth or sixth grade and by 11th grade, their scores reach the 70th percentile. The average scores of these English learners are higher than native English speakers being schooled in their own language. Collier and Thomas refer to this as a truly astounding achievement. Dual language programs not only close the achievement gap between English language learners and non-English language learners, these programs propel English learners past the average scores of native English speakers in English-only classes. This is astounding because it represents a higher achievement than that of native English speakers being taught in their own language. In order to continue to close the achievement gap, we ask that our program be continued past the elementary years into middle school and high school and thank you for your time.
In clarification, I don't think we received an email.
Yes, you will receive it tonight, a big, long data file.
Yeah, we were looking at each other.
Sorry.
Okay.
Hi, I am Julie Beno and my husband Todd and I live at 3550 Brookhaven Club Drive in Farmers Branch. Since 1997, we've enjoyed many great years with our kids at Stark, but I've never been prouder to be a part of the Stark family than I am today. Our son Jake is a fifth grader in the dual program and will have a kindergartner in the dual program in two years. Let me briefly share with you how dual language programs promote high scores for all participants. Let's go back in history a little bit. Six years ago, when the program started, the dual program started at Stark and the other CFA ISD schools, there was a huge need to educate the consumers, i.e. parents. There were fears that exposing students at an early age to a second language would delay intellectual growth and language skills. Parents were afraid that our kids would be behind in certain areas and that there would be language confusion. Dual was very new to us, but now we know and the research has consistently shown that not only is being bilingual and in a dual language program not a risk, but it actually is good for your brain. It's interesting that in the 2009-2010 North Carolina studies by Thomas and Collier, that the scores of fifth, sixth and seventh grade, which would include our students who are fifth graders transitioning into middle school, those students in North Carolina schools in dual language programs exceeded the state averages in math and in reading for the grade ahead of them regardless of their native language, their socioeconomic background or their race. This North Carolina, Thomas and Collier study bottom lines by stating, the achievement levels for all North Carolina students in dual language programs is similar to the achievement levels in gifted programs. It's no surprise to hear that in those schools in North Carolina that offer dual language, there is a long waiting list. So what is it about dual that creates these higher scores? Well, this is the part that gets real scientific, so I didn't bring my brain model, but actually I can, I can break it down to where we can understand it, to things that work. The activity that happens in the brain that allows our students to toggle between two languages is always active. So in other words, they are always having to think and differentiate between English and Spanish. It's always on. This type of concentration allows them to build their concentration. It also helps them to promote their memory skills as well as compartmentalize their thinking. All of these things, which are great test-taking skills. It organizes their speech and their communication tasks. It even helps them to focus on a task without worrying about being distracted. They're able to hone in on one thing. And then just finally, I wanted to state that the research is continuing and it's actually very fascinating as to how dual language works in shaping the brain. And this part of it is, is just so interesting because they are able to, doctors are able to do a brain scan on a brain and because of the activity that goes on and the density of all of the neurological things, a bilingual brain has a signature that they are able to determine without even speaking to the patient. So thank you very much.
Another frequently cited benefit of dual language programming is helping prepare our students to enter a global economy. So I'm here to talk a little bit about what does that mean? What does a global economy mean and what does it mean for our students when they graduate from Carrollton Farmers Branch? Our students are entering a time where US-based companies are increasingly looking beyond our borders for commerce and gross, growth. Some statistics from the US Census Bureau give us one snapshot of what that means, of how US companies are growing outside of our borders. These statistics show that in, between 1999 and 2000, the employment numbers for US-based multinational corporations, US-based corporations that have a presence around the world, that their employment grew by only 1% between 1999 and 2008. But if you dig into those numbers, what you see is actual, you see a decline in employment by the US parent, but an increase in employment by foreign affiliates. These multinational corporations have, they have a US-based parent and, but then they own other companies overseas that are called foreign affiliates. Well, here's the data on the two. Between 1999 and 2008, employment by the US parents dropped 8%. Between 1999 and 2008, employment by the foreign affiliates increased 30%, that's growth going on around the world. And so what does this mean for our students? What does this increased activity overseas mean for our students? I've got, I've got just a couple of quick, concrete examples that I think will give you an idea. We have a friend who's an executive with General Electric. Part of his job is to oversee the manufacturing of a line of appliances. He has to travel to Mexico because part of those appliances are manufactured in Mexico and he has to communicate with the executives down there and with the workers down there. He's told me he's had some very tough negotiations down there, but he doesn't speak the language. So he always brings a translator with him. But despite having a very good translator, he says he always feels like he's at a disadvantage in the negotiations because he doesn't understand the subtleties of the language, he doesn't understand the subtleties of the culture. We have a second friend who's an executive with PepsiCo. Part of his job is to help coordinate a sustainability initiative. Basically, what his job is, is to help PepsiCo's factories around the world become more energy-efficient. So he has to travel around the world and to these factories and I noticed before he takes these trips, he always tries to learn some of the language of the country he's going to visit, even though the PepsiCo executives that he deals with all speak English. They speak very good English. He still tries to learn some of the language because he says it helps him develop the strong relationships he needs to affect change in these factories. The bottom line is, these are the types of jobs, there's many other examples we could give, but these are the kinds of jobs that our children are going to compete for when they graduate. The fifth grade language skills that we're presently giving them will certainly help them become fluent tourists, but it's going to take more than tourism to compete for these global jobs. We don't want to prepare, just prepare our students to become fluent tourists. We want to prepare them to communicate as polished professionals that will compete for these jobs. A dual language program that extends into middle school and high school will give them that polish and help them compete.
My name is Lisa Platt and I live at 3185 Golf and Green Drive. I have a daughter in kindergarten at Stark and two more children to follow in her footsteps. This is, this spreadsheet is a small sample of dual language schools, campuses in the United States. Thomas and Collier gave us five model schools to interview. Those are highlighted on the spreadsheet and we used the internet to find other campuses that had dual language programs. that had dual-language programs. Gomez &amp; Gomez, the Dual Language Training Institute, also gave us a list of their 460 dual-language campuses. Thomas and Collier have said that a K through 12 commitment is a non-negotiable component of dual language. I'm not going to go over all the details of all the schools on the spreadsheet, but I do want to point out that there are some clear commonalities in implementation. First, you will see that almost every school offers a social studies course in Spanish. Spanish Language Arts is also a clear course option, and most schools are offering three pre-AP Spanish classes in middle school. The top school on the spreadsheet, Ed Walker Middle School and DISD, is a great success story. Preston Hall families have come back to the public school because of dual language. Its two elementary schools are so popular that a lottery determines entrance for the students today. Their first middle school class is two years away, but a model is already in place. They plan to offer social studies in Spanish and a Spanish Language Arts class. Rosemont Elementary, the second school, is another DISD story in Oak Cliff. A parent-action committee worked for three years to continue dual language in the middle school. Their elementary will add the sixth-through-eighth-grade dual students on its campus in 2012, and it will be a magnet school. They will offer science, social studies, math, and language arts in Spanish. Legacy Middle School in San Antonio will see its first dual high school class in 2012. They are an example of how versatile you can be with the curriculum. The teacher instructs in Spanish, but all the work and homework with the earnest math concepts are in English. They offer science and math in Spanish as well as a pre-AP Spanish class. Isleta ISD in El Paso has two K through eight dual campuses and one K through six dual campus. They stress fluency in three languages in high school. One-way dual students merge into two-way dual in middle school. They offer science, social studies band, and Texas History in Spanish, as well as a Spanish pre-AP class. The school at the bottom of the list is River Glen in San Jose, and this is a great model for our school district. Dual began here in 1986 as a small program to recruit white, African-American, and Asian families in a 90% Hispanic school. Six years later, it was a K through five dedicated dual magnet school. Twelve years later, it spanked K through eight, and 20 years later, it has a very long waiting list. This school offers science and social studies in Spanish, as well as a Spanish Language Arts class. Lastly, our fifth-grade class, these are the numbers of our students currently in the program. Our fifth-grade class has 16 students and is very representative of a first-year middle school program. You can see that our kindergarten has a total of 114 at the two schools, so interest has grown a little bit over the last few years. This spreadsheet shows the future class sizes that we'll need to prepare for. Thank you.
Hi, Chris Egan again, 2600 Layton May Lane. We're going to wrap up the program by talking about where we go from here. We've talked about the benefits of dual language, we've looked at some examples of dual-language programs that have extended into middle school and high school. So the question now is, what does Farmers Branch do? How do they extend it into middle school and high school, and what sort of funding is required? We've looked at some literature on this, and we come up with two points, that the planning focuses on two areas. Number one, which classes will be taught in Spanish, and number two, hiring the teachers that can teach those classes. Now, as far as the classes that will be taught in Spanish, that's the focus of planning for middle and high school, because the classes that are taught in English are not technically part of the dual-language program. They're part of the general population or other special programs. The dual-language programs at these higher levels consist of the classes that are taught in Spanish. Now, we've asked Virginia Collier about this, and we've looked at some research, you just saw some of it, and what it comes down to is most schools are offering at least two classes in Spanish. One class is Spanish Language Arts class, a second class is a core class taught in Spanish, whether it be social studies, science, or math. Now, we found that most districts are choosing social studies. One big reason for that is the availability of textbooks. There's many textbooks in Spanish for social studies. Another reason for that could be some concern from parents that if math and science classes like that at the upper levels are taught in Spanish, their entrance, college entrance exams scores could suffer. Now, we see no research to justify that, but it's a fear nonetheless. We have talked to a school that said they've had problems with math being chosen as their Spanish-taught class. The reason they've had problems is that as kids get up in the upper levels of math, you start having more math classes. Some students will go into more advanced math, some students stay at the standard math program, but in dual language, they were only able to offer one math class. And so you had some kids in there that maybe wanted to take more advanced math classes, but couldn't. So social studies may be the best choice for the second class. Finally, hiring bilingual teachers. All the research says this is the biggest challenge, that they're hard to find, especially at the upper levels, but it gave us some tips. First of all, find bilingual teachers that can teach in multiple subjects. And for smaller dual-language classes, like the class we've got coming up, that's in fifth grade right now, find dual-language teachers that are willing to teach part-time. That could help save the district some money. You can consider opportunities for online learning, and then also consider partnering with a local college, like the University of North Texas, fantastic education university. Partner with their education college, start to train bilingual teachers, and maybe feed them into our districts because of the strong relationship we have with them.
Hello, my name is Sally Derrick, and I live at 3000 Randy Lane in Farmers Branch. Tonight, we present to you three concrete options that CFB ISD has to continue the dual-language program. The first option is a kindergarten-through-eighth-grade dual-language academy campus, where students would be able to stay at the same campus for nine years of dual-language education. The second option would be to merge ESL students with dual-language students into a select number of middle-school dual academy slots, where two content courses are offered in Spanish. The third option is to transition grades sixth through eighth to an IB campus with two content courses taught in Spanish. We also, at this point, need to be planning towards a high school model. Either an IB campus or an academy of language would fit with our current proposed programs. Dr. Burns, Madam President, and Board Members, this is our call to action. We believe in CFB ISD, and we believe in high achievement for all students. We are fortunate that our children were given the innovative opportunity of a dual-language program, a program that will allow our children to compete in a global economy. This program has revitalized Janey Stark, and we are all proud to be a dual-language campus. The momentum and the successes of dual language in CFB and the national trends support the continuation of this program into middle school. Please make the long-term commitment to these students and finish what we have started. We would like to close tonight with a request for a follow-up meeting with Dr. Mayer and her curriculum team to discuss how we can make this CFB success story continue for prospective families as well as future CFB graduates. There are many people here tonight who believe in dual language. Please stand if you are here tonight in support of the continuation of the dual-language We thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. We believe in CFB ISD and trust that you will make the best decisions for our children. Thank you.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, first of all, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the people that came tonight and the people out there in the audience. I guess all I can say is, thank you for supporting what the district has tried to initiate many, many years ago, and took a little while to get off the ground, but obviously, you've said everything that we've been saying for a while and said it better, so we appreciate that. And so, certainly, the request to work with our team is there, and we will do that. Dr. Mayer, do you have any words that you can say without straining your voice too much there that you want to say, and then I'll conclude with a couple of other things.
I just want to say how enjoyable that was, how I absolutely love hearing the children speak in English and Spanish. I have a couple of little grandkids that can flip in and out of both languages, and you're speaking to the choir, and I'd be very happy to meet with you.
Yes. Yes, again, you know, Dr. Mayer and her team, Dr. Hinojosa and all of them, they have looked at the research for a long time, they have been supporting this. We've had, I think, both those groups in the district right now, and we had Gomez &amp; Gomez and Congress Bothier in the district already speak to our teachers, so we know how valuable it is, and we truly believe that that's an asset for our kids to be multilingual, there's no doubt about it. It can transform public education to have that ability. And so, we will continue to work and figure out ways. I think it's no secret to anybody out there that our challenge moving forward, the state has handed us a really, a tall mountain to climb with cutting our budget 10%. And so, you know, we've got a lot of issues to try to work through, to try to do what we think is the right thing, and the state giving us less resources to do it with, and that's our challenge. And so, we may have to ask the community, you know, how do you help us with those resources so that we can really continue to do the kind of things that we need to do to support our kids, although the state's not willing to support them for us? And that's part of the challenge that this board has, is allocating those resources, what we have left, in the right ways to serve our kids the best. And so, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but I can assure you that we're going to keep that goal as high achievement for our kids in mind, and we know dual language does that high achievement. So, thank you.
Well, and I think the board, we appreciate the time you invested in coming and presenting this very informative, you know, speakers to us. I think we appreciate our staff, they've been telling us that this is effective, it's good to hear it from the believers. So, any other board, Mr. Shore?
Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, I doubt that there's any of the seven board members who challenge what you want to do. I doubt there's anybody here who doesn't want to accomplish what you spoke for this evening. Regretfully, I encourage you to stay for the next report, because I don't think there's any lack of desire to accomplish what you want. There may be a difficulty in accomplishing it. Not too long ago, we had people standing there who were exhorting us to make certain that the bands could travel to the away games. And so, there are competing interests, and all of us know that, we have that in our household budgets. But you make a mistake, I suggest everybody out there makes a mistake, if you think there's not a desire to try to achieve what you spoke for. About six years ago, when I ran for this office, one of the strongest things I supported was our kids need to be taught two languages. So I'm listening to you speak, and I'm saying, wow, it's finally come to fruition, at least at one place. So, we thank you, you may want to listen to the next report.
And I'd like to say that I am a true believer of dual language. My children are both in dual language, and I know that with my husband, who does international business, speaking more than one language is extremely important, and it, you know, what I found very helpful out of that report was that being a two-way dual program, first of all, in both Dr. Hinojosa's and the other report showed the greatest achievement improvement, and I find that very important, and it also bridged the socioeconomic gap, which is what we have discovered in this district, that it's, our district gap is not about race, it's about socioeconomics, and we've found that over and over again, that that is where we are lacking. So what I'm hearing is that this is a great way to help improve that, and I would be extremely supportive of finding ways to, you know, make this happen, and I truly encourage us to continue it as a parent and as a board member. I'd really like to see this continue.
Ms. Chaffin?
You know, I think that, speaking for myself alone, I believe that dual language is the right way to go. I've worked overseas in my lifetime in the Middle East. I did not speak the language when I got there. I learned a little of it, didn't have a chance to learn a lot, but I worked with a lot of different people from a lot of different countries, and one of the groups that was there, that was represented on that contract, were four gentlemen from Denmark. And the four gentlemen from Denmark spoke Danish, of course, they spoke English, they had had 13 years of English-language training, kindergarten through 12 years old, through 12th grade, and they did not consider English a second language, it was just one of the languages that they knew. They also spoke four foreign languages, not Danish, not English, four foreign languages. And when things got bad and we couldn't get English-language news, I had a shortwave radio, and I had people at my house every night listening to the radio, because we could find a radio station that would come in, and one of them could translate it and tell us what was going on in the outside world, which was really nice. It was the one place that I've ever felt undereducated. And I am really sorry that my children did not have the opportunity to be a part of a program like this one, but I would really encourage you to stay and see what we're facing in terms of economics, because that's what we have to really look at. It's not that we don't have a desire, because we do. I believe it's the way for us to go, but we have to look at the economics and see how it is that we're going to pay for it, and I'd encourage you to stay. But thank you so much, all of you, for coming tonight, and for presenting this, and for being passionate about the program and about what it's providing for your children and what you see it providing for our future. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I think everybody at Stark knows how passionate I am about the dual program, and have been for many years, and there's a few of you out there that are convinced to go to Stark in order to be in the dual program. I would like to say, on the other side of the coin, I taught the 50/50 program, we called it in those days, for five years, and the children that were Spanish speakers only, who accumulated English from kindergarten through fifth grade at Janey Stark, are fluent in both languages today, and most of them are, some of them are teaching in our district, some of them are, and most of them have gone on to become very successful in their careers and in college. So, I know that our English speakers are going to have that tremendous advantage of having both languages fluent and being fluent in both, and I'm proud to also have a granddaughter that's in second grade at Stark in the dual program. We'll do all we can, but as we say, we all have those problems at home, and we have big problems in our school districts right now.
So if the board is ready, at this time, I believe we're ready to go to Item 2B by the report by Superintendent. Y'all ready?
Would you like a five?
We'll take a five-minute break, it's 9:01, we'll come back at 9:06, but please, consider staying for our report on the budget. Thank you. End with Item 2B, report on CFB ISD preliminary 2012-2013 general fund budget. I'd like to thank those of y'all that chose to stay with us for a few more minutes, and Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, and members of the board. Mr. Hyatt is preparing tonight to give you some new numbers and some new insight into our financial situation, and I guess what I say is there's some good news. Because of the work the district's done the past few years, there's some really good things in this report. I guess the reality is there's still some bad things, is because we still have a long way to go toward really having a financially, I guess, clear way to do the things that we want to do. We're going to have to make some sacrifices still, even though some of the good, some of the news is really positive in this. So, Mr. Hyatt, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, members of the board. As Dr. Burns said, there is bad news and good news. I mean, the bad news is, there's nothing new on the horizon from the state. Obviously, the legislature hasn't met Obviously, the legislature hasn't met, obviously, nothing's changed from the law of the past last year. And the board is unfortunately too familiar with what happened last year. But the good news is, the results of our operations and the results of some of the things we've done in the past year are sowing some positive results, and are giving us a little bit of breathing room. And I'll try to explain that to you. The key term that I'll express over and over again tonight is the term preliminary in this discussion. This is, after all, still 2011, and we're talking about the 2012-13 budget year. So I'll caution you that a lot of these numbers are very early estimates, and to some degree, even some guesses. Just to reinforce one of the overall concepts of what we're talking about here, we use the term budget because that's the term they use in the literature, and that's the term state uses. But honestly, we've kind of embraced the concept of resource allocation here in Carrollton Farmers Branch. Because the idea of getting more or having extra resources to try to allocate and budget is beginning to be more and more difficult. So what we have to do is take what we have and spread them around to the right places. And the right places is a key element. This quote from Robert Mazzano indicates and reinforces that high-performing districts, to ensure that the necessary resources include, resources including time, money, personnel, and materials are allocated to accomplish district goals, but allocated to the appropriate places is a key element. Talk a little bit about the state history and background. Again, this board's painfully aware of most of what happened last year. But way back in 2006, this is where the, that was really the genesis of the current problem. In 2006, the legislature passed House Bill 1. This legislation provided for a reduction in property taxes. Hopefully, most of you remember back in, prior to 2006, our tax rate was $1.50 per hundred dollars in test value by legislative fiat. Is that the right term, Mr. Shore?
That's what we mandate.
Yeah. They forced all school district taxes to compress or reduce their tax rates by a third. In our case, since we were at $1.50, that forced us to compress our tax rate to a dollar at that time. Since, it did allow a 4 cent increase of that, so we've increased it back up to $1.04. But that created what's known as a formula or target revenue system. And the reason it's formula or target revenue, it just depends on what your funding level is, as to which element you fall under, either a formula provision or a target revenue provision. The goal of House Bill 1, beyond reducing property taxes, was to provide a minimum funding level and prevent school district revenue losses due to the MNO property tax relief measure. Notice the concept, minimum funding level. Much discussion, both at the legislature and in the courts, have dealt with what's the minimum requirement of the states to provide an adequate education program in the state of Texas. The state and the courts have approved, and courts have upheld, the minimum level they required is pretty minimum. And not something that I think we or our community be real proud of. But that's-
That's being challenged right now, though.
And it is being challenged. And that's one of the, one of the elements of lawsuits that's currently before the court. The current funding system, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about the way the system works, but I do think it's important for us to remember that the basic formula system, with each school district funded on the number and type of students enrolled, that's the underlying premise of the, of the current funding system. And that is, school districts are made up of different types of students. You know, your basic regular students, some bilingual students, some special ed students, some career and technology students. And then all of them have, have a weight, if you will, assigned by the state. And each of those students indexed by their weight is given a value, and you multiply the weighted student times the amount, the value it's given, to arrive at a basic formula-calculated equally, equal level funding for every school district in the state of Texas. Unfortunately, back in 2006, the funding elements that the state created for all those different types of students, when you add them all up, only about 25% of the school districts in Texas would get as much money as they were already getting using that formula. So something around 25% of the school districts in Texas are funded on that formula basis. But a minimum funding level was set at the amount that each district would have received under the 2006 funding system. So, in essence, the legislature said, we're going to change the system, but nobody will get any less than they would have got under the 2006 funding model. And this minimum level is known as target revenue. So that's kind of a floor for what districts were getting under the 2006 funding model, is the floor. The additional amount of money above the formula-calculated amount in that target revenue floor, just as a term to put in your toolbox, is known as the additional state aid for tax reduction, or ASATAR. The reason that's important is that's a, there's a lot of conversation at the legislative level about reducing or eliminating ASATAR. That's a big deal, because that means a reduction for districts like us. In reality, the target revenue tied school districts like Carrollton Farmers Branch to 2006 revenue levels without the ability to significantly increase their revenues other than by voter-approved tax increase. Since target revenues were tied to the 2000 funding levels of the individual districts back in 2006, there's a broad range of what that target revenue is. Just to illustrate the target wealth disparity, this is slightly different than the packet that we're just sending out to you. I had a question asked, and I thought I added a couple of slides to, to give a little bit more information. The lowest target wealth, target value school district in the state of Texas, a little district called Redlick ISD, out in far east Texas, has 433 kids. And they essentially are guaranteed a target revenue of $3,897 per kid. That's not exactly what they get, but it's the fundamental building block of their revenue, of their funding calculation, is $3,897 per student. The highest is a little district called Westbrook ISD, with 237 districts out in west central Texas. They get $13,086 per student. Pretty significant spread. Therein lies another element of the lawsuit that's currently before the courts, is, is it really fair for there to be such a disparity between school districts? One might obviously suggest that it is unfair to have such an obvious disparity, and we might philosophically agree with that. We, as a school district, need to be somewhat cautious in our approach to that, because the average being 5,441, if you were to equalize and make everybody equal, then you would think you would migrate somewhere close to that average of 5,441. But our school district currently has $5,647 per student. We rank 787th out of the 1,029 school districts. If, with the current available resources, we equalized and everybody got the same amount, we would actually lose more money.
That doesn't address the adequacy issue.
Has not addressed the adequacy issue.
Has nothing to do with adequacy.
Has nothing to do with adequacy. As an aside, that's another element of the current lawsuit, and an element of two other lawsuits that have been discussed, not filed yet that I know of. But to, to address the adequacy issue requires not just a desire and, and will of the legislature-
Or that district for the adequacy, because we get used to, say you can do it.
Exactly. Just to further illustrate the wealth disparity, some local districts, ranging from Irving ISD with $5,100 per student, to Northwest with 67. So even in our own community, while the spread isn't nearly as wide as in the extremes, there still is a pretty significant difference in, in wealth between districts. Again, ours is 56-47. Of some import is, what are the big boys, Dallas and Houston, at 55-62 and 54-20. So, historically, the legislature tends to migrate to Dallas and Houston. If that's where the legislature ended, wanted to land, if you will, on what is a fair number, there is some, some reason to believe they might land on something between that 54-20 and 55-62. Again, it's less money than we currently have. Now, let's talk about some more depressing information. And this is still old news. This goes to the core of the state's problem with addressing the adequacy issue, and that they're $20 billion short. This was, 20 billion was the number discussed at the end of legislative session. I think the number's something less than that now, but not a lot less.
I thought we were doing great. Isn't the guy running for president, he said we did great?
He's also the one who told you when he campaigned that Texas would have a balanced budget, no problem, don't worry. Excuse me.
Part of that $20 billion revenue shortfall with the state trickled down to, to quote another ex-president, to all the school districts in Texas, including Carrollton Farmers Branch. Everybody's going to face some revenue loss, including our school district. At the end of legislative session, estimates at that time were that Carrollton Farmers Branch would lose approximately $10 million for the 11-12 school year, and another $6 million for the 12-13 school year. We'll point out in a few minutes where that's pretty close to, appears to be what's happening. Talk about our own school district's financial situation. We've said this several times, and we've said it lots during the, the budget process last fall, but it truly is a fact, and it's something that the board needs to take some pride in, and frankly, take some personal responsibility for it. And that is that we are in better situation than, than many school districts. We've postured ourselves better, we've worked harder earlier in advance. So several of the reductions that we've made in the past, and several of the decisions that you've made in the past, have left you in a better financial position than a lot of school districts, and a lot better than we could have been. So that's, that's the beginning of some of the good news. Again, past reductions, although painful, will allow CFP some breathing room. And Dr. Burns has used the term several times in the last few weeks, buying time is a big deal right now. The legislature, I believe, I truly believe this, we are ahead of the curve in, in dealing with this problem. There are going to be many, many, many school districts that if don't, if not going completely bankrupt, are going to be going the way of our friends in Keller. I don't like, don't like to point, but- Here's some real, here's some real numbers. Now, I always like to give you at least one page with real numbers, because all the rest of the slides are not real numbers. In 2011, the most previous past year, the numbers are not totally audited yet. By definition, even though the audit's over, our auditor's left the field, they're, they're happy with it. Mr. Roderick's out in the audience, he's putting together the final comprehensive financial statements. So these numbers are, are, are real. We had $218 million in general fund and stimulus sources of funds last year. We, for presentation of this conversation, we include the general fund and stimulus, because those stimulus funds really did nothing but replace some general fund. These are not normal federal funds that provide additional supplementary services, and in fact, by law, can't be used to supplement the general fund. These funds that were provided for in the last two years were specifically identified to supplement and replace general fund funds. So to really get a total picture of how much money we get and spend, you have to combine the two sources. So $218 million in general fund and stimulus sources, total general fund uses, $215.9 million. Congratulations, this is a real number. The school district put $2.1 million in the bank last year.
Woo-hoo.
That's a good thing. That's a really good thing. If you recall, our budget for 2010-11, I think was $6.7 million deficit budget. I also seem to remember that we told you that we were going to do everything we could to eliminate or reduce that deficit. We were successful.
Do you recall when we passed the resource allocation document in August of 2010? If we were dipping into the fund balance then?
Yes, $6.7 million.
So it really is an 8.7 swing.
Yes, sir. We knew then, and I'll fast-forward you a little bit, just like when we passed the budget in August of 2011, you just passed a $9.7 million deficit budget in 2011-12. We knew then that, that we were going to, we were ahead of that curve. We knew we were ahead of this curve, too. Frankly, I didn't think it was quite this much. And a lot of credit has to go to you for supporting us in our cost-cutting measures. Our personnel department in particular took great, made great efforts in, in streamlining any personnel issues that we had. That's where we had the most savings. So that helped a lot.
72% of the budget.
Absolutely.
Of the resource allocation.
Absolutely. And we also did have a few more kids, not a lot, but a few more kids generated a little bit more revenue than we originally projected. So, all things good for 2010-11. Created you a compare and contrast to what 2011-12's current estimates are. This isn't the budget. This is a September, October, three months into the year estimate of what reality might look like, not the budget. The budget is, the budget we, we created and guessed at criminy nine, eight, nine months ago. So we're smarter now than we were eight or nine months when we created the budget. So our, my new guess, my new estimate of what we're going to end the 2011-12 fiscal year in, is something in the ballpark of $3.5 to $4 million. Don't hold me to it. Somewhere between $3.5 and $4 to $9 million, but I lean toward the closer of 3.6. We've had enough, we have enough months of payroll that we can project out and make a reasonable guess at what this year's going, going to look like. Notice I changed the, the next year, the 12-13, from estimate to guess. It truly is a guess. But it's a guess making the assumption that we don't do very much of anything. All we, we do essentially the same thing for 12-13 that we're doing for 11-12 with, but continuing to make cost-saving adjustments, make continuing reductions in, for efficiencies, you know, found efficiencies. In that, in 2011-12, let me back up, and I'll point out something to you. For the 11, 10-11 to 11-12 estimates, you'll notice that the total sources went from $218 million to $208 million, about a $10 million decrease, oddly enough, about what the, some of the, some of the models were estimating for us early in the legislative session. In the 2011-12 to 12-13, the funding went from 208 million to 199.7. That's a little bit more than what we originally were estimating in the legislative session, but that's about an $8 million decrease. The original estimates were around 6.
And a big chunk of that, from 10-11 to 11-12, to now 12-13, is that stimulus money?
Absolutely. That's, the stimulus money goes away, and the state did nothing to replace it. If you'll, not such brilliant scientific calculation, the total uses of funds, as I mentioned earlier, assuming we don't do anything different, you'd assume we'd spend about the same amount of money. So we're using the same amount of expenditures, but it just reflects the different amount of revenues. That yields for 2012-13 approximately $12 million financial deficit. $12 million is not insignificant, but if you recall, just three or four months ago, we were talking to you about $20 million. So that's an $8 million improvement, if you will, to some degree based on our efficiencies and savings that we've identified, as well as just having better information. So, what's our resource allocation strategy? And tonight's presentation is just that, a presentation. This is not a working session, this is not a, an opportunity for you to make final decisions, or actually even to work on it a whole lot. What this is tonight is to give you a framework to begin your thought process and your own personal philosophical approaches to how we approach this, for you to develop and provide for us those policy directions for us to make the hard decisions based on. If we do basically nothing, if we have, do have a limited impact on our operation, no drastic changes, it'll yield an approximately $12 million budget deficit. The resulting ending fund balance after those two years, after 11-12 and 12-13, will have a fund balance of $57.4 million, which is approximately 106 days of operation in fund balance. Those are, those are terms that you guys are real familiar with. Giving you some history of our fund balance and days in operation and fund balance back to 2006-7. We went from 130 days of operation in 2006-7, actually grew to a high in 2010-11 of 133 days of operation. If we do have those deficits that I just discussed with you, it will drop to 128 days to 106 days at, at the end of 2012-13. to 106 days at the end of 2012-13. Just a graphic illustration of the same numbers. Far be it from me, being your pessimist accountant-type guy, to say this is good news, but that's not a bad-looking financial position for a school district to have in the current, pretty significantly serious financial times. It shows a solid base for financial stability. It does illustrate some concern. When that graph begins to have a consistent trend, we're down, it means we still need to be working on it, but it's not time to panic, it's not time to run away and hide the women and children.[635.38][635.38](laughter) Probably a bad illustration.
It's a picture that a lot of districts would just kill for.
Absolutely. So, a term that, again, Dr. Burns uses this with us probably more often than some of us would like, but what's your number? And what's your number, and this is your homework for the next couple of months till we actually come back next, after the break, and I think February...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth is a work session that's dedicated to budget process and budget work session. Is to define in your mind, how big a deficit are you willing to accept in the 2012-13? How small a fund balance is, do you have a comfort level with, so that you can be comfortable that your district is still sound stably and we can buy some time till either we or the legislature can do something about it? And is it somewhat correlated in number is the number of days in fund balance, is obviously a function of the total fund balance. Issues to consider when coming up with your number and what you're comfortable with? Are there any alternative funding sources? But how much budget reduction can we live with? How painful can we accept some of the changes that we'll have to have, depending on how big the budget cuts might be? You haven't heard me talk of anything about compensation in this conversation. There's no consideration for or calculation of any kind of employee compensation increase or decrease, I guess is a positive to spend to put on it, but there's no compensation change considered in this conversation. And the TRE, the tax ratification election. What is your thoughts and considerations of whether or not we might want to consider proposing a TRE? None of the...
Can I talk about that for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hyde, you said earlier that if we don't do anything different, your guesstimate
was for 2012-2013, there'll be a $12 million deficit, which starts your hair to turn gray and your blood pressure to go up because the fund balance is going down.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, you may have been sleeping earlier during this meeting, but I heard a number of people, they had black and red and white shirts, and they were standing at that very same podium, and they were exhorting us with data, with passion, with concern, that they want to change. I didn't hear them, anybody being critical of what we're doing, but they want to change. And it sounded to me like the change they wanted was a pretty valuable change. But if we don't do anything different, then all those people with black shirts have disappointment. But I'm understanding you to be telling us that a tax ratification election may be a source of initial funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We currently taxed at $1.04. What does that mean?
It means for every $100 of assessed property valuation of a property owner, either homeowner or business owner, we apply a tax rate of $1.04 times that value and collect taxes on it.
My understanding is that we, as a board, we could actually move that rate up to $1.17.
That's correct.
But if we do that, then the voters have to vote on that.
That's correct.
Okay. And if the voters pass that, we then get more revenue.
That's correct.
But in the process of the district getting more revenue, each of the taxpayers pays more money.
Yes, sir.
And so, so what really is lurking there is that people have to make some decisions regarding where they want to allocate 13 cents per $100 of value. And I see you nodding your head up and down.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's something that I think everybody in this room needs to be considering, because if we, if we don't do anything different, we're going $12 million in the hole. There's a potential way to raise revenue, which would allow different things to be done, but it strikes the property owners in their pocketbook to some pennies per $100.
Mark, on that one, the 106 days in the bank is still above, isn't it 90 days or 60 to 90 days?
Right. The range, and we've talked about this in several budget meetings, the range of what is adequate in fund balance, and what's adequate in fund balance frankly ebbs and flows with how scary things are in the world, but historically, traditionally, traditional municipal, municipal being all governments like school districts and cities, have set a 60 to 90 day window as adequate. 60 days being on the low end and somewhat uncomfortable, 90 days is on the high end and more comfortable. In a stable financial environment where we weren't losing money annually, somewhere in that 60, 90 a day would be very comfortable. So at 106 days, we're at a very stable, I tried to indicate that a while ago, it's a very stable and somewhat comfortable place to be. The concern is, what's the ongoing trend? We can't, we have to be cautious about continuing to not address the symptom, not address the cause of the problem, even though the symptoms haven't manifested themselves yet. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And Mr. Hyde, one of the things that, of course, that we've been working on since the board's work study back in August, has been to take the objectives that you gave us regarding budget reductions, in other words, prioritizing the impact and minimizing the impact on student achievement, minimizing the impact on our support programs, extracurricular, et cetera, and minimizing the impact on employees. We have been taking everything in the budget discretionary and applying those objectives to that. So what Mr. Hyde referred to, what's your number, is that if you're not comfortable with taking $12 million out of the deficit, then we will continue to have to reduce the spending up to the dollar amount you're not comfortable with, so to speak, and those programs would go. So that's where we are right now. It's either the TRE into adding revenue, or if we're going to do something different and up to an amount you're comfortable with, we'd be not doing something else or doing less of something else to get there.
With these issues to consider, we've already internally, administratively, have begun, as Dr. Burns said, strategizing about budget reduction, some alternative revenue sources, even talked about what compensation packages would cost, talked about what a TRE would generate. At your last work session, you know, one of the only obvious alternative sources of fund is the limited open enrollment. While that's attractive for lots of reasons, as you can remember from last, at that work session, that's not going to generate $12 million. That's not going to generate, probably in the initial years, it'll probably be on a limited basis. You know, if it generates a few hundred thousand dollars, that will probably be a reasonable expectation. Candidly, we've got a couple of other internal sources of fund that we might be able to allocate some monies to. So we have a few things that we can put into that category to reduce that deficit, but your charge, and the first thing that we'll really begin addressing in that February work session, is where is your comfort threshold? You know, until we know what that number is, until we know what your comfort threshold is, we're kind of shooting at the dark about what you want us to do with our resource allocation. So we'll begin our process there, we'll work through what that comfort threshold is. Once we know what the comfort threshold is, then we'll present to you some alternatives to get to that threshold. Then you'll get to tell us what you think of those alternatives. Simple calendar, and this is very rudimentary at this point, but here we are in the 1st of December. We'll have a work-study session on the 16th. My objective is to finalize our plan, your plan, by the April 5th board meeting. That doesn't mean you'll adopt the budget that night, that doesn't mean we'll be through working, but it'll mean that the board and the administration has come to mutual understanding and mutual agreement that we're done. We're going to, we're going to do what you've decided that you want us to do by that April 5th, so that we'll know what our, what our objective is. That's already getting relatively late in the game to make any major changes for the next year, so that's, we need to be close to finish with philosophizing by April 5th. On May 3rd, we'll come back and review the status of operational changes and all the other things that we're having to do to implement that plan. Hopefully, at that meeting, we just confirm that we're on the right track. If we're on the right track, then it's a simple matter of getting the tax roll and adopting a budget in late August. That's kind of the plan. That's all I have for you tonight. Be happy to ask you any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that last year when we talked about the budget and how much we were, how much more we were losing for the 12-13 year, we had talked about that if we were going to have large amounts of personnel reduction, we would have those kind of numbers figured out by December, which we're now in. So I was wondering, do we have that? And it sounded like we were talking more about that come April, but has that date got moved, or are we already...
Well, actually, it depends on what the deficit number is you're comfortable with, then that can translate to some of the personnel reductions and how many. So it really depends on what's that number again, it's back to what's the number.
We've pushed that, the December date more towards...
To our work study. December was really to get to a number so that we could identify where we're going. We have the priority and we can calculate that out, but the number that you're comfortable with in the deficit really translates into what that personnel number is. But we figure in February, if that is the direction and you want us to continue to make reductions, then we know X amount of people that includes, and then we can start to work with that. The other thing, due to the, I guess, you know, if you want to call any good news in this, that it not being quite as bad as we'd originally thought of almost 20 million is that, that still buys us even more time for those people to, in transitioning. So we're trying not to have to enforce our reduction mandatory policy, but it also, we may have to identify more if you're not comfortable with the budget the way we have it.
But, yeah, I just want to make sure we still have enough time.
Absolutely, and that's our plan, to have time.
That we allow people to have.
Yes, and that's our plan, to have time. Mr. Shore?
At a $12 million in the red, seems very appropriate in this state, in the red in 2012-2013, would we be looking at personnel layoffs?
Well, if you wanted all 12 million, absolutely. If you are comfortable with something less than 12 million, in other words, if you wanted us to make that deficit zero, and you wanted us to cut $12 million so that we wouldn't have a deficit, then...
Oh, okay.
Then yes.
I stated my question inaccurately. If we tap into the fund balance, the tune of $12 million, and I'm understanding you'd be saying that we don't have to...
Then we don't initiate that, absolutely, that's right. Now, we would continue with the board's direction of us and their strategic plan of operational efficiency. If we had attrition, we may not replace some positions, absolutely. But we wouldn't be forcing the layoff, we would be using attrition.
Tipping into 12 million, we don't have to allow...
Would prevent that, absolutely.
Okay, so that, that's kind of what I was also asking, is that we talked about before that we were going to have, we had a number that we were, no matter what, we were kind of feeling that we had to reduce in that number. We're now not feeling that if we are all comfortable with the 12 million...
If you're comfortable, that's right. If you're comfortable with the 12 million, then that makes that kind of the status quo, with the exception of, we would still probably not replace some positions that came open...
Right, but we wouldn't, that number that we had last year is gone.
Yeah, we wouldn't force any, and we certainly couldn't add any with that, yeah.
I may add a couple of additional pieces of information. One of the pieces of information that's improved the situation to address some of those numbers, I think we've talked to like maybe as many as 350 layoffs, if we really had to address that whole deficit with staff reduction. You guys need to go pat your superintendent on the back and frankly, your personnel department on the back. Without very much fanfare and without a whole lot of stress and strain, we actually reduced our employees base by about 130 people this year. Nobody got fired, nobody got told to leave, but through attrition and through management of resources and management of our employees, there are about 130 fewer people working here this year than there were last year. So we've accomplished a pretty significant cut without having to lay off anybody. The other thing, just two weeks ago, Dr. Burns, we got new commissioners' rules about identifying, one of my favorite terms, financial exigency. The commissioner has come to the new revelation that there are new rules about what is financial exigency. You know, no laws were passed, no legislative session met, but the commissioner has determined that there are new rules, and there's a very high probability under those new standards, we couldn't declare financial exigency even with a $20 million deficit, definitely not with a $12 million deficit. So while we may have to manage some personnel and we, you know, if you direct us to really address all 12 million, we may have to eliminate some positions, but we couldn't implement a broad-based layoff program. It would have to be done within the scope of our regular operations.
And I, I'm sorry, one more question. If we have, I mean, it's obviously, what we feel comfortable with, the seven of us, may not be what people are working...
Four of us. Four.
Yeah, four of us. Well, we may not feel, what we may not feel comfortable with, or what we may feel comfortable with versus what the actual staff feels comfortable with. I mean, when we're coming up with our numbers, I feel like I couldn't come up with my number without knowing where we are on the scale of comfortable, if we could absorb another 150. I mean, I'm hoping that in that, you know, February 15th meeting, we hear kind of where y'all are at too. I mean, I know that anything more...
In terms of our recommendation of where we would feel comfortable...
Before I feel comfortable giving you my number of where I'm comfortable, I'd like to know.
Right, right. And we would certainly be prepared to give you that, you know, as we studied a little bit more. I do want to point out here that, as Mr. Hyde said, some of the, I guess, the fruits of our labor that we've had the last couple of years to, through attrition, not replacing positions, that we've, you know, we're seeing some of the benefits of that, but I also want to remind everybody, we also have asked for 59 waivers of exceeding 22 to 1.
Exactly.
So, you know, we're also looking at that impacting achievement that we're kind of concerned about.
And we lengthened our school days.
Yeah, yeah, and so, you know, there's, but we are certainly willing to tell you what we would be comfortable with in terms of maintaining and reaching our goal of high achievement, because there is a point where you cut so much, you have a diminishing return.
Well, I know that...
And we pointed that out with ERG, I think, that we have reduced our spending, but not necessarily is the cheapest spending district the highest performing.
Right, and I know the three hats I wear as a parent, as a former teacher, and as a board member, all those would be different comfortable levels.
Yeah.
I would like to say, you know, we harp all the time about the fact that we don't do a good job, at least I don't think we do a good job, of communicating to our voters and to our parents and to the members of our community, such things as this. I mean, $12 million deficit is something that everybody should, all of our voters should know about, and we need to get that information out to these people. And then, on the other hand, we also, to, before February, I think it would behoove us to, we have a fat budget. We can't, we can't think of anything at this point, but I know that I get lots of input from the community as to, some suggestions are very good and some are pretty off the wall, but at least I think that our voters should have an input somehow, somewhere. And we need to know before February so that we can come to our work-study with some good information, but we need to do a better job of getting this information out, and we are not doing a good job. We rely too much upon our technology and too many of our voters, that especially our my age, yes, they may be on their computers, but they're not necessarily on our webpage. And we just cannot rely upon that webpage to get all that information out to the people that we need to be reaching, our parents and our non-parents.
Mr. Hyde, it's a great discussion, except I have one concern. We're only talking about the near term. My greatest fear and concern is not what's going to... My greatest fear and concern is not what's gonna happen next year, but it's the year after and the year after. Because we've, you've already made these general references. Do we take a 12, a $12 million cut next year, but what happens after the year after and the year after? In addition to that, if the courts rule that we, we go to an equalized system, we, we lose an additional 4% per student again. So if we just look out a couple of years, we have, that's what I'm concerned about. I, I think we're looking at this just for next year, and that, I'm not concerned about next year, I'm concerned about the, the subsequent years.
And that may affect your number.
That's exactly right.
That's very good.
Mr. Goud, I would agree with that, and I think that's, I think most of you would agree that that's kind of been my consistent mantra for the last few years. That being said, we're in a mode right now that buying time is about the only thing we can do as, as a school district. I, I agree, I think the, the parents that spoke earlier have a great idea, and I think it's a great program, and the fact that, that we're sitting around here realizing that if we are to consider that, that makes that $12 million number somewhat bigger, you know, maybe not dramatically, but, you know, anything that you consider, or we consider adding to our operations, to our program, is going to make our financial problems worse if we can't find some alternative reductions. But I'll tell you, we've got at least two, maybe three significant events that are gonna happen. One, whether we like it or not, the legislature's gonna meet again.
No!
Yep.
And whether we like it or not, the courts are gonna address at least one lawsuit, maybe as many as four, that's, that is gonna be dealing with school finance. I'm, I'm not optimistic at all that in the next legislative session, this legislature solves this problem. Not, I truly, if they do anything to help it, I'll be surprised, but they're not gonna solve it. But I am optimistic that possibly in another legislative session after that, they're gonna be forced into some type of, at least partial solution, and then maybe in another one after that, they get close to, to fixing it. And my objective, and Dr. Burns' objective, is to help you guide this district that we meet somewhere in the middle, that we don't totally run out of money before they come up with some solution in three to five years. And that's, that's our pledge to you, that we'll, we'll do our best to not let you run out of money, and we'll continue reducing. And honestly, the best-case scenario here is we find every nickel we can find in alternative sources, we do everything we can to, to reduce the, the requirements, and we keep pecking away, and this sounds strange, it's small time, but looking at all the little pieces around the edges, because we've found millions of dollars, some five or six million dollars this year, by reducing around the edges. And if you'll keep supporting your superintendent like you have been, keep being supportive of what we're doing, you know, we can keep finding small things, and I don't know, I don't know if we can find the whole $12 million, but, but we can find some of it next year and over the next, before we totally run out of money, before we run out of that 106 days of fund balance. We will either get to the reduction that we have to get, or the legislature will have solved our problem to some degree, or our community recognizes our problem, and, and Ms. Watson, your point is correct, we need to continue to communicate with our, with our community. And our, if our community recognizes our problem, and we have enough problem, it, it leads us into that tax election. And that tax election, if we go get the maximum of 13 cents, generates something in the ballpark of 14 or 15, 15 million dollars. That, to a small degree, not a small degree, that, to a significant degree, solves the immediate problem, doesn't solve the long-term problem. It, it gets us back to even, but at least getting back to even is a pretty good place to be.
And Mr. Hyde, and I think Mr. Goud had a point there, that with the legislatures and their opinion of us is that you haven't used your 13 cents, so why are we helping you yet? And so, that's why 2013 doesn't look real promising, because they're gonna look at the number of school districts that have raised their taxes to the maximum of 13 cents before they're even considering probably helping us. And so, I think they've said that many, many times, and don't, don't complain too much if you haven't even taken advantage of what you have. So it's been said out there for most districts, it's not a matter of if you're gonna have an election, it's when you're gonna have one with this current environment, so.
Dr. Burns, I don't want to belabor this point, but members of the public may want to give attention to what you just said, that because this district and other districts haven't sought voter approval of a, up to a $1.17 in tax revenue, that the legislature very easily could say, "We're not gonna do anything," because you haven't utilized a tool that is ostensibly in your toolbox. And so the public needs to be aware of that, that they may indirectly be saying, unless and until you ask your voters to approve a $1.17 tax, and they haven't, and they haven't rejected it, don't waste our time. That's what they very easily could be saying, and everybody here needs to be aware of that.
And, Mr. Hyde, can you remind us what that amount, up to $1.17, that difference would be? Is it like 10 million, or?
About 14 or 15 million dollars.
Okay, so that's the number we're talking about. And I would just reach out to the visitors and say, "If y'all have ideas or suggestions on how to communicate this subject to the public, you know, manner in which people, the right amount of time and can listen and absorb it, any input you have, please contact Mr. Hyde or me, or Dr. Burns."
Absolutely.
Do board members, do y'all have any more comments or questions? We appreciate your update, Dr. Burns.
You're welcome. And to not end the evening on a down note, this is a lot better than it could be. I mean, we, we feel very fortunate that we're in a position to have some choices here into, as Mr. Hyde said, and we've talked about, give us some more time to deal with the issue, but not have to force things and not have to put people in harm's way, because we don't have money. And so, we, we do feel fortunate that we have that, that position right now.
Keller and Fourney would love to be so fortunate.
Absolutely, so, we, we're still counting our blessings, and we're very fortunate, so.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to item 3, Board Operations, and 3A is Audience for Guests. We're not gonna take another break, but if y'all want to leave, you're welcome to get up and leave. We realize it's 9:57, so, and some of y'all have younger people maybe still with you. But we appreciate your attendance, and we appreciate your interest in this board and this school district, so, thank you. Item 3A, Audience for Guests, I have three Audience for Guests signed up. And just reminder, we do encourage comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. We just ask that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. So Ms. Rachel Lewis will be first, Mr. Gregory Forster second, and Ms. Shirley Tarpley third. Ms. Lewis, we're ready for you. You're up. And Mr. Goud, are you gonna do the Foghorn Leghorn noise, or are you gonna use the gentle beat?
Good evening. My name is Rachel Lewis, and I live at 2017 Deerfield Drive, Carrollton, Texas, 75007. Dr. Burns, school board members, and CFB community. Last school board meeting, I left you guys with a question. I ask for an ex, an explanation or justification as to why Dr. Patricia Franklin, an African-American woman, could not have continued into the capacity she was already doing after Mr. Kim Holland left the district, and that is directing student services. As of today, she is still fulfilling that capacity, but does not have the title. Tell me, under what justifications are you using to move Ms. Joanne Gillan into this position? Again, I would like to say that this is by no means an attack on Mrs. Gillan. This is an attack on racial discrimination. But Ms. Gillan is in a position that rightfully should have been given to Dr. Franklin. CFB needs to live up to its claim of valuing diversity by making personal, personnel decisions that reflect African-Americans and other minorities in high central office leadership position. I've had many of you from the school board come to me and ask me, "Well, why do you think that we do not retain black, the black teachers and administrators here within the district?" This is one of the reasons why you do not, is because they are overlooked. You need central office administrators who understand the subtleties of unfair treatment, and who are willing to help make the system work for all people. We all know that racial discrimination still exists. It is alive and real in CFB ISD, and you should not take this lightly or for granted. Ending racial discrimination in CFB elections, employee selection can be accomplished by only taking a stand. And again, tonight, I ask you to take that stand. Dr. Franklin could have been moved into that position. You didn't have to give her a raise, you could have just given her the position. She has the qualifications. Please do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Our next Audience for Guests, and I'll just mention, remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting, which these are not. So item, second person is Mr. Forster.
Yes, thank you. I'm not gonna bore, bore the board with this issue, this is purely for Dr. Burns, because I know he is the one that you look to, to handle our personnel issues. This board has got other things to do. Let me just make one comment, though, about the dual English language. What was presented tonight was great, but what they talked about was extending the program to the kids at Stark, not the whole school district. So we gotta start thinking about that. If the program is so successful at Stark, maybe we need to start thinking about expanding the whole thing, before we start adding middle school. I'll just give you my opinion on that first. But I really, you know, as a businessman all my life, and I've been there myself, when my boss got promoted, and I was second in command, I was automatically assumed to be in charge on a temporary basis until a new permanent person could be, could be found. That's just plain and simple. Why it didn't happen this time, I would like to hear an answer to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Forster. I'm just checking out whose phones ring, sorry. Ms. Tarpley?
I sit way too low, but thank God that I can sit and I can stand even though I'm wobbly. My name is Shirley Tarpley, and I reside at 1507 Mile and Way in Carrollton, Texas. I'm gonna give you my phone number again, 724166109. And I am here tonight to speak on the issue of the student, director of student services. Now, I am, I integrated R.L. Turner, I integrated Newman Smith, and it is time that we stop allowing other black administrators to train other people for the job that they're doing.
Amen.
Now, Doc, now how can I tell my grandchildren that, okay, if you work hard, you go to school, and you get a doctor's degree, and then you have to train someone without your qualifications to take over your job? That is unfair. And I'm telling you, I do feel sorry for the budget, but keep this in mind. When I go to Austin, and I will be going next week after I have a couple of meetings with you all, and when I ask the school board, the state school board to look into it, I'm going to bring it up a lot of things. Now, I know y'all have insurance for these types of lawsuits and things like that, but keep this in mind, the more lawsuits that you have, the higher the premium that you're gonna have to consider to pay. Think about this now, because I am as serious as a heart attack. Y'all don't do the right thing, "I'm on my way to Austin next week, and things are going to be happening." And what I promise you is you do not want the state school board getting into this matter and interrupting services in the Carrollton-Farmers-Brain School District.
Thank you, Ms. Tarpley. We'll now move to item 3B, Consent Agenda. 3B1 is Election of Personnel. 3B2, Review Tasbe Update 90, Legal Policies, BBD Legal, BBE Legal, and GBAA Legal, and Consider Revising BBD Local First Reading. Item 3B3, Review Tasbe Update 91, Legal Policies, and Add/Revise or Delete Local Policies as Recommended by Tasbe Policy Service and District Administrative Staff First Reading. 3B4, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for Creteview Speech Team to Travel to Indianapolis, Indiana, June 10th through 17th, 2012, to Attend the National Forensics League NFL Nationals. 3B5, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for R.L. Turner Academy for Media Arts and Technology to Travel to Park City, Utah, January 25th to 29th, 2012, for the Sundance Festival. 3B6, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for Bush Mill School Top Notch Step Team to Travel to Orlando, Florida, February 18th to 20th, 2012, to Attend the Disney Step Classic Nation Step Competition. 3B7, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for Newman Smith High School Orchestra to Travel to Chicago, Illinois, March 30th through April 2nd, 2012, to Perform at the Symphony Center, Chicago, for the Circle of Honor Music Festival. 3B8, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for Ranchview High School Choir and Orchestra to Travel to Chicago, Illinois, March 9th through 12th, 2012. 3B9, Consider Tax Office Report for October 2011. 3B10, Consider All Matters Related to the Election of Members of the Denton County, Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, including Casting All Votes for John Mahalik. 3B11, Consider All Matters Related to the Election of the Suburban School Districts Represented to the Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, including Resolution Casting the District's Vote for Jerry O. Jones. 3B12, Consider CSP Number 11-11-011-1, that's appropriate in November 11, for Condenser Coil Remediation. 3B13, Consider RFP Number 11-11-101-10 for Service Vehicles. 3B14, Consider RFP Number 11-11-031-1 for Technology Education Lab Supplies. 3B15, Consider Approval of Purchase of Kick Drugs Out of America, KDOOA, Martial Arts Program at Barbara Bush, Vivian Field, Dana Flong, DeWitt Perry, and Ted Pope Middle Schools. 3B16, Consider Acceptance of Purchasing Report for the Period November 3rd through December 1st, 2011. 3B17, Consider RFP Number 10-10-071-2 for Technology Applications Consulting. 3B8, supplemental. 3B18, Consider Declaring Furniture, Audio-Visual Equipment and Technology Equipment Surplus and Authorizing Them for Disposal. 3B19, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board Trustees Work Study Meeting Held on November 3rd, 2011. 3B20, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board Trustees Regular Meeting Held November 3rd, 2011. Board, that is the consent agenda that we have for tonight. Are there any questions, comments, actions you wish to take? Ms. Chaffin?
Ms. Klein, I recommend that we accept the consent agenda, that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move to 3C, Report of Continued Education Credit Received by Board That item is part of our agenda, and it shows, and I have to roll to it, that our board has all received the appropriate continuing education this year, and we are all duly prepared to serve as trustees of this school district. Is that all I need to do, Dr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so, and state that all board members have met the requirement.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready for item, agenda item 4, Comments from Board Members. Are there any comments regarding posted agenda items 4A from the board? Nobody wants to talk about the Annie Show again?
The Annie Show is amazing, and those girls that were performing tonight were just great, especially the little orphan that was right there. great, especially the little orphan that was right there in front of me. Might have had the last name of Webb, no, I'm just kidding. But I would like to, you know, say that I'm really intrigued, interested in what the dual-language parents had to present, the two-way dual, and I am really intrigued about how the, it shows that it really helps the socioeconomic, and we have been struggling to find that, and I find that very appealing, that we can, that maybe we have somewhat of an answer, and I would love to see how we can integrate that. I really would love to see that those 19 kids that are moving in don't get left behind, you know, that it is 19 kids that we're trying to find something for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Board members, are there any other comments you wish to make at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a brief recess and reconvene. It's 10:11, we'll reconvene at 10:15, if y'all don't mind, for Agenda Item Number 5, which is Closed Session. 5B, Consultation with Attorneys Regarding All Matters Related to Litigation, District Court Cost, Number 3:08, CV 01559, hyphen BF, Samantha Sanchez versus Carrollton-Farmers-Branche Independent School District, Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. And 5C, Consultation with Attorneys Regarding All Matters Related to Litigation, District Court Cost, Number 3:11-CV-00438-K, Diana Suarez et al. versus Carrollton-Farmers-Branche Independent School District et al., Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorney. So it's now 10:12. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shore.
Yes. I'm buying all the kids.
Which end, the east or the west?
Oh, Texas, right by Denison, on the down. On the down. I just got a Texas Lake license. Texas license, you get on the lake, you got to get a lake license, and then go across, yeah, get Oklahoma's license. But the Oklahoma license, it expires December every year, so no matter when you buy it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a calendar year.
Yeah, exactly, that's the reason why I didn't buy one.
We reconvene this meeting in open session at 10:35 for Agenda Item 6, which is Reconvene for Public Meeting to Vote on Matters Considered in Closed Meeting. Board members, was there anything discussed in closed session that needs board action?
No, there was not. No, there was not.
No, there was not? Are there any other matters from closed session that need board action? Hearing none, seeing none, by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we adjourned at 10:36.
Amen. Amen.